Hi there, Susan, it's Theo.
Hi.
Hey there, how are you?
Good, how are you?
There. I gotta do something with my microphone. Hello, Aaron, and hi, Matt. Hello, Mr. Jordan.
Good evening.
Hey, him, he welcome.
Hey there, Bill.
Hello, Theo. Hi, Susan. Theo, you may want to make one of us a co-host.
Oh, yeah.
And you might want to let the Dornies know that we can hear them talking.
Sounds good. Right, is, and, yeah, now, now I'm a little flummoxed. Is Jim, yeah, Jim's on vacation, right?
I'm on vacation this week. Last meeting, we discussed that and we're gonna review, but as Matt, as Mr. Lowery suggested, I think we're gonna just open, review what's here, any comments, and then move on to the next meeting for voting, I believe. Oh, was that right, Matt?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Want to make sure we're on the same page. I'm just catching up on some emails.
Right. So, uh, yeah, no, we're, and we'll, we'll, we'll catch everybody up just to make sure. And, all right, so let's call our July 25th meeting to order. It's nice to see everyone on the call today. Roll call quick, Bill Spalding, I've made you co-host.
Thank you, present.
All right, Matt Lowery.
Here.
Perfect, thank you, and Kevin York.
Here.
And myself here, so we do have a quorum. And like to get approval of the July 11th minutes. Any comments, or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Bill, any second.
Stick it.
Thank you, Kevin. All in favor? Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Terrific, all right. We do have a couple of minutes before we open our public meeting, or public hearing, rather, excuse me. And. Hope everyone did all right with the storms, my, uh, my, uh, my dog's been freaking out all day.
It's part of the reason why I'm still in work. I did not want to bike through it.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. Well, I'll add one, one bit of filler is that, um, the open space and recreation plan is going to get reviewed by the Conservation Commission on August 10th, looking, looking straight, good and straightforward, so all are welcome. And that's, that's half of my items not anticipated, so we're good to go. My watch says seven oh four, or seven oh three, my, my computer says seven oh four. All right, I've got seven oh five, so I'd like to call us, I'd like to reopen our public hearing on the subdivision definitive plan for 197 to Han Street. And thanks to Mr. Dorni and Attorney Schumer and David Jordan for joining, and Jesse's Otter Pilot for being on the call as well. So, yeah, no, I, I agree, let's, uh, I think the best way to proceed, Bill, you're correct, is to step through the documents, and it might be, I would say, stepping, stepping through the, the comments we received from engineering and relaying those against the new plans that we received, or would, would any of the board members prefer to move in a different way, just to, what, what would you feel would be the most effective?
Well, we got new plans, it's all what, what have we been revising the plans to start, and then then we can go quickly through the engineering comments.
All right. That works, all right, so, uh, Mr. Jordan and Attorney Schumer, I'll turn it over to y'all. You should be able to share your screen, pull up the, the plans.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Jesse Schumer representing the applicant, the Dornies. David Jordan is on and can share the screen with respect to the updated plans. I think for the most part, the revisions since we were last before you are fairly minor. There's an updated draft of the decision, and I, we just received a copy of DPW letter about eight minutes ago.
Right.
So, we're, we're reviewing that in, in real time, as it were, so I'll, I'll defer to David if he wants to go ahead and share his screen and, and go through the, the updates.
Thank you, Jesse. For the record, David Jordan with Greenman Peterson, engineer of Lance of Air. And it says host disabled screen sharing.
Sorry, looking at the wrong stuff here.
So while that gets sorted out, as Attorney Schumer said, the changes to the plans since the last meeting really amounted to nothing more than notes and a few minor details. When you look at the plans, you're not going to see anything that's significantly different than what you saw two weeks ago. So again, just for a reminder for everybody, there is, the remaining comments from engineering last time really centered around just finalizing some details and calculations for our stormwater management strategy, which largely consists of this infiltration trench next to the shared driveway. So we've provided additional notes on the plans, made some adjustments to the calculations as requested, and I think for the most part, addressed the stormwater management strategy that we show on the plan here. I know we have some final comments from engineering that, as Attorney Schumer said, we're kind of reading as we go along here, so we can get to that in a moment, but I guess in terms of the plan, if the board has any specific questions regarding this or anything that we have or do show on the plans, I'd be happy to answer those questions right now. And it's easy for me to stop sharing my screen, I could do that as well.
No, no, I, I think sharing your screen is fine at the moment. Yeah, um, I would love to know more of the, sort of the math and the calculations of the drainage, but I, I think that's more, more for myself and relying on, on engineering to, to do that, that math and that, that assessment, so. The, uh, if you want to, so, and do any board members have any questions about the comments that previously had been received from engineering regarding the calculations of the drainage and the, the edits to the plans? Not hearing any. Mr. Jordan, do you want to show us the, the, basically the, the changes to the notes that you referenced?
Yep, bear with me for a minute as I run through here.
Yeah, there. I think it starts on, on, the property rights and dimensional standards, page, or page three, where we do itemize the, the waivers.
That's right, yep. Yeah, so the, the note on this sheet has been, the notes have been updated to reflect the specific waivers within the subdivision regu-, rules and regulations that we're seeking waivers for. Originally, we had made just kind of a blanket statement, but this identifies what specifically, which items we are specifically not meeting with this shared driveway that we're proposing here. And then we've also added a note that they're, that we're seeking a waiver on the coefficient of regularity for lot one in accordance with your zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
And I believe we discussed the coefficient of, coefficient of regularity issue in a prior meeting, but if anybody has any questions about that, again, I can certainly go over with everybody.
No, I, I think, I think we're, we're good on that score.
Okay. I'm going to the next page here. Now, we had a couple of notes here. And again, I don't remember exactly when these were added, whether it was last go-around or this most recent go-around, but notes 15, 16, and 17 all came out of comments from engineering, so we've added those notes as requested, and I think we've actually expanded some other notes, note four in particular, based on engineering comments.
I, I, I think also number eight, directing the contractor to the stormwater operation and maintenance manual and plan.
Yes, that is correct. Next page here. Again, I think some of these notes are repetitive from the prior sheet. I know, again, note 17 was added fairly recently. And, and 18, I think those are added, actually, actually the last go-around here. Note five was also updated, which was, again, just at the request of some language that engineering wanted reflected on the plans. And then after that, these are just detail sheets after this, and I don't know, the, we did revise, there was some additional revisions required for this infiltration trench detail that were requested and made with these, the most recent set of plans. So again, just for reference, the most recent set of plans are dated July 17th, forwarded to planning and engineering, I believe, last Tuesday. So that's, this is the current set of plans.
Yes, they reported to the board members and posted on our website as well, just so everyone knows.
Yeah, thank you.
The sheet was not revised, and I think that's basically it in terms of the revisions that were made to the plans.
That's, uh, that's really helpful. Uh, let's see.
If I may, Mr. Chair, David, did you already make reference to the lot numbers, the change to the lot numbers on the plans?
Yeah, I was gonna bring that up.
Okay, so just for, for the, for everyone's reference, Mr. Chair, there, there had been a, a comment from engineering in their last letter that requested that we rename the, the designation of the lots, the, the town subdivision regulations call for the lots to be numbered with numbers instead of letters, which was shown on the previous plan. So I would say, you know, one of the most substantial and probably the most substantial change in this plan revision was changing lot one, or lot A and B to lot one and two, which is shown now. In engineering's letter that just came across a few minutes ago, they are requesting that the lots be numbered and designated in the fashion that it is anticipated the assessor's office will, will show them as the tax map lots. We have no concern with that being a condition of, of the board's decision, is that, that that be reflected in the final mylar, that's, that's not an issue. But we did not submit updated plans showing that, because that was a comment that the board had not seen.
Yeah.
Prior to tonight's hearing, and we, we wanted to, to put this at your doorstep, as it were, before making any further changes without your consultation.
Certainly.
Yeah, then the lots will be, lots one and two should be renumbered as lot 54B and 54E respectively.
B and E?
54B and 54E.
Yep, very, thank you.
So, I just wanted to make a comment on this. This seems to come up a lot, and for some reason, these numbers don't get assigned until using the end of these projects, and, I don't know why. And is there a way for this to actually come into front end, because now all of the, we've got a few documents that now need to go be revised. It does sound like a little trivial thing, but there's work to be involved, there's work here to be done, and I just don't know why it's something like this on the front of the project can't, can't be stipulated, but it, it just keeps happening, and I don't know what the holdup is and why it's always an issue. So that's something that we can look at going forward. And do, does this come from GIS? You know, where, where are these?
Yeah, so they are assigned by the assessor's office, and we typically, yeah, like you said, at the end, there'll be like an email that goes out to all internal departments with the GIS, yeah, it comes from the assessors and the GIS and that information, the parcel numbers are pulled from that, I'm trying to pull up our GIS right now. But we usually typically get them after the fact, like you mentioned, so. I'm just seeing. Sorry, just bear with me.
Is that something that is part of our, our approval that, you know, we, we acknowledge that the lot numbers will be always updated for the assessor, or is that? Is there?
The, the, if I may, Mr. Chair, the draft decision does make reference to the tax assessor lot numbers.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that was recommended by engineering. I, I think the, the reason why it typically happens after the fact is because as a, technically, the lots don't exist until the plan is recorded, so.
Right.
It's, it's kind of who moves first kind of situation, but we're happy to redesignate them on the plan so that it's clear.
Yeah, so if you look at our assessor's map, Mr. Dorni's property is currently 32-040-54B. And then, so, yeah, when the other lot, then would be the 54E.
Okay. So, right, it just sounds like, unless we, unless, right, there's a way, we'll figure out a way to write the language in the future to try to accommodate that. Maybe, maybe ahead of time. Unless there's another way to do it. But Matt, I, I appreciate the, the question and the comment and the desire to find a, an easier way to do this.
Well, I'm only, other times have the same requirement, and I, I basically said, I'm having this many lots, let me know what they are as soon as possible, because you'd be surprised at how many documents you need to go back and be revised, and sometimes you miss them, and it's, it's an expense that doesn't need to happen.
Yeah.
That's where my frustration lies.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to make this process now as painless as, as possible, yet we keep getting hung up on the issues.
Um, I have a separate, so I'm on the same map, Aaron, I believe. Um, and do you notice that the, the lots are already separated? Or am I just?
Second, sorry, I'm, um, so I don't know if GIS didn't, so you have Andrew, his name is on the front parcel, or I guess we'll call it the front parcel there, and that was owned by someone else, I believe, Andrew, you might want to speak to that, and then he purchased the land, is that correct, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so I don't know if they just didn't remove the lot line. I don't, yeah, I don't know what that.
Okay.
What that's all about.
And I apologize, Mr. Chair, I should, Mr. Chair, I should have asked before I took over screen sharing, but if you could all see my screen, I'm on the town of Wakefield property, this is an excellent resource, by the way, and you could see.
We can't see it.
I can stop sharing if you wanna.
Well, I thought I, okay, if I could
Yeah.
Share that.
There you go.
Okay.
We had options to view one of the two screen shares.
Okay, if you could, can you see the town of Wakefield property map?
Yes.
Okay, so you could see what I was looking at, I think I pulled it up when Aaron was as well, you could see this piece versus the piece that we're discussing now, which does have that 32-040, 040-54B.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't know why I didn't check this earlier, but is that odd that this, I know you started to explain this, Aaron?
I'd add a little bit of explanation to that.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, the lot at the corner of, was it Kathleen Drive and the Han Street came in with a Form A subdivision. Um, yeah, that lot there, at that time, that Form A subdivision created the lot that is now three Kathleen Drive. It put the lot, the existing house on the corner, on a smaller lot, and then left that residual odd-shaped piece that's joining Andrew's lot, that was created as a lot. Maybe, I believe at the time, it shows up on the plan as maybe a non-building lot with the intent for it to be combined with the Dornies' lot.
Okay.
And Dornies have acquired that lot since that, since that Form A plan was approved and recorded. So I think as someone started to say, it's simply a matter of the assessor not quite catching up with what's, you know, happening, what happened over there. But it is those two lots combined that make up the two points, whatever is acres that we show on our plan, that we are now seeking to subdivide with the plan that's before you this evening.
Okay, I'm just gonna stop my share.
That's the getting back to my notes here. There was a revised drainage analysis in response to engineering comments that, that was mentioned. And resubmission of a draft stormwater operations maintenance plan, which I don't think changed at all, right, from prior iterations.
It did not. There was just a minor change in the language on the O and M plan at the request of the engineering division, but in general, the O and M plan is the same. We did add an estimated annual budget as requested by engineering, and we've also just clarified which items in the O and M plan are, or the responsible parties for each item in the O and M plan. or uh, the responsible parties for each item in the O and M plan. Um, some are exclusive to each individual lot and some are a shared responsibility through the homeowners association that will be created. Uh, with, you know, with these two lots here.
You, uh. Do you mind pulling that up real quick?
Yep, give me a moment to get to it.
And for the record, uh, we also received the light department sign off. That's been for the one. Back to, now we've got multiple participants can share simultaneously still.
All right, so I think I'm.
I can.
There, here we go.
There we go.
All right, so this is the operation and maintenance plan document. Um. As I stated, we added the responsible parties, so infiltration trench, both homeowners, roof drips, strips, individual homeowners. Um, and then for each, we've identified an estimated annual budget, which was something that was uh, requested by engineering. Um. So that's been added, and then this also includes a essentially a schematic plan just helping the homeowners identify what it is we're talking about, because we're sometimes using language that um, people aren't familiar with. Uh, so this just identifies the different features we're talking about within the O and M plan. Um, so this will be referenced in the decision, it'll be referenced in the homeowners association and made a part of the permanent record.
Thank you.
Oh, I I have a question about that, so. So the maintenance log should have similar inspections on paragraph two. And so the inspection, I mean, paragraph one, inspection forms should be submitted to the department annually or or requesting. Um. I know engineers aren't here to answer this, but this, we've been doing these for years, and I don't even know if any of these gets submitted to anyone that works at that. So, perhaps by next meeting, maybe we can find a next for this. So, uh, it doesn't say, he was supposed to be keeping them and submitting them, should that, should that be outlined here, who the person is? Or David, do you have any experience in other projects I've just done?
Yeah, um. Fortunately, you were breaking up a little bit, but I think I understand what you're asking. So we had received a comment from engineering that uh, you know, this read of probate, and it says, O and M plan should be updated to require an annual report to the engineering division, some submittal outlining that all required maintenance consistent with the O and M has been completed. Um, so that's why we've revised that first paragraph stating it's submitted to the engineering division annually. Now, they didn't specify any particular person um, or timeframe. Um, we we just uh, provided this language as requested. And in the latest uh, memo we got today from engineering, um, they do say we've addressed the comment. Uh, but I do understand uh, the points that uh, Mr. Lowery is making here.
I I guess it's something on the, the this end of of the equation, what the town needs to have something that when they are filed, um, you know who it goes to and you can actually retrieve, so. I guess I'll uh, I'll query engineering on what the process is here, but it seems like you know, that we are a person and a date to at which point these would be need to be filed. But uh, I'm gonna try to look into that and see.
Uh, would you think that's uh, is that something we would add to our storm revision rules and regs, or is that something that would just be more of a a procedure for the engineering department?
Uh, I think it would be a procedures set up by the engineering department, too, but I don't think they really want to handle all these projects to requirement, but they define. So, uh, I may request them on a couple of projects and to see if they're even being completed. I don't know if they, certainly I don't, I don't believe they have been required or being maintained on other projects.
Right. All right, um. So, um. Any other comments about the the O and M plan from other members, um? Okay. Yeah, uh, my apologies to having to toggle back and forth.
Mr. Chair, I I I don't mean to to interrupt. This is a I I I'm on limited time tonight to appear before the board because I'm unfortunately double booked.
Yeah.
Uh, so at this point, uh, what I would request and suggest is perhaps that we go to the engineering memo because all all of the materials have been submitted for record for the board. So you could really, you can review these at your leisure as you deliberate on the board's decision. Um, but I I think it makes sense to maybe to focus our attention on on what the new information is since since the last uh, we were together, which is primarily the engineering letter, I would say.
Um, I I, yeah, I'm welcome, welcome to that, too. Um, I do also think, uh, yeah. We'll, we'll want to review it more ourselves, um, and and, yeah, and come back to this on at our next meeting on August tenth.
Um, so, Mr. Chair, I believe, I believe tonight, we're we're going to be requesting that the board close the hearing. We're we're at the point where we're we're past the ninety-day review period for the board, and we've we've responded to all of the comments and requests. The board has a draft decision, so from our perspective, I think we're in the position where we feel it's it's appropriate for the board to close and deliberate on a decision.
Very good. Well, let's jump to the uh, the the new, the today's engineering memo, and uh, we can step through it to to the best of our ability. Right.
Would you like me to share that, Mr. Chair, or or perhaps Aaron has a copy of it handy?
Yeah, I I've also got it up. What, um? Now, I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Jordan. Is this right?
Yes, you're good.
Yeah, so if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um. You'll see that a number of these, say, comment addressed. I think, you know, if possible, in understanding that Attorney Schumer uh, needs to at some point sign off to get on another meeting, maybe focusing on the ones where um, engineering is saying, comment remain, or is offered additional responses.
Yeah, so the um, and number five uh, is regarding the proof plan. Um, and that the the um, I, yeah, the the, the point being that the proof plan demonstrated that a conventional lot could not be built without these waivers. Um, so I um. I think uh, in some ways, this has been asked and answered, right? Um. Uh, and this, this is uh, this is uh, resolved by the the waivers being uh, proposed, correct?
That's our our understanding.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, so the next one is, no, that's the same one. Uh, no, sorry, I'm. And then, uh, oh, yeah, here we go, the the second being, um, uh, potential contribution uh, for additional uh, construction on the on the water system, the water main.
So this one, Mr. Chair, you you may remember, we talked about this last week. This was proposed as a condition in the board's decision, the draft decision that we provided for your for your use, if you if you see fit to to use it for the decision on this project. Uh, but essentially, what we have proposed to do is leave this as a matter to be addressed between the constructor and the DPW, if it turns out that there is a an impact on municipal service that can't be accommodated by the existing infrastructure. The addition of one house will will likely be uh, something that the infrastructure can accommodate without any issue, and and in that case, uh, we would, we would expect there to be no, no issue of contribution or mitigation, but uh, we would propose to leave that to be determined uh, outside of the context of this hearing at the time.
Um. Yeah, I th- I and I I think that I I think we can all agree that 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 can be accommodated, and that would be spelled out in in the decision. As a, as future negotiation. The next comment is regarding uh, the various fees, um. Uh, regarding the sewer system and and other fees.
That is addressed also in a condition, Mr. Chair.
Agreed.
What number condition is that? I'm sorry, Attorney Schumer?
That is two, condition two.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And condition seventeen, I think, is like, it it does show up a couple of times.
Um, I have a question. I don't know, um, if anyone knows, so if an A and R plan gets done, is there an INI fee for that, or is it just for a subdivision project?
I believe, sorry, go ahead, Attorney Schumer.
I was just, I'm sorry, Aaron. I I was just gonna say, I believe it's only when there's actually a sewer connection that that's something would, that an INI fee would would be triggered.
So if if a single, if there's an A and R plan and a house is constructed, do they pay an INI fee, or is it just if there's a subdivision? I I'm asking, but I'm not sure.
It it's, it's when the the house is built, regardless of whether there's a subdivision. It's it's something that's regulated by the town's stormwater bylaw under your NPT's permit.
Okay, um, I'm only asking because, you know, the the additional uh, fee for tying to the water line seems, again, since it's only one house, it seems excessive, and I don't know why anyone uh, keeps pushing for this for this one single house, but I don't think they would do it for uh, an A and R plan. It could help you build out there, so. Um, my past comment that I think this is a little bit of overreaching, and Aaron stands.
It's, it, the the INI, the infiltration and inflow removal fee, that's standard. It's actually required that the town do this uh, under the the federal permit, so we're happy to comply, of course.
Yeah, it, I'm fine with that. It it's, it's for the water system contribution that I think. If a, if a, someone's building a house, I don't think they'd be asked to contribute to one house if they'd be up to contribute some water, you know, like that. That's, that's my thing.
Agreed.
Matt, just a comment on that. I wonder if we don't see it on an A and R because it goes through for permitting and it's handled at the permit level, and it doesn't come in front of us.
It it could be.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not liking all this either.
But, well, yeah, I, yeah, I, I think uh, this is certainly a worthy topic for uh, sort of another discussion and uh, maybe with engineering, just in terms of the marginal cost and uh, and the like. Um, so. We'll move on, so uh, the, the next comment uh, is regarding uh, the sewer cleanup and a video uh, uh, has been uh, taken and uh, sent and, oh, and addressed, sorry, I should have. So the next, uh, the um, the next comment uh, that's still uh, an open item is regarding the infiltration trench and uh, uh, the possibility of uh, the requirement to revise to include an overflow pipe to the town drainage system. Um. And here's the engineering department does not agree with the applicant and will require the project to make a connection to the town drainage system.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could blame by way of sharing my screen.
Sure.
Um. Tell you what is being discussed here. Yes. Let me now, let me start here. So. The comment is we, is within, is in regard to this infiltration trench. So as we've stated, the intent here is to grab the surface runoff from the driveway and uh, actually a portion of the existing lot, so not just the new paved driveway, but even some of the existing uh, grass areas will be directed into this infiltration trench to allow the water to recharge back into the ground. Um, as with any drainage system, there is some storm that will exceed the capacity of that system. So whether it be this infiltration trench, you know, at some point, it's gonna rain so hard that the water can't infiltrate fast enough. Um, just like at some point, this catch basin in the Han Street is gonna be unable to handle uh, the the water that's coming into it, and you'll see it, you know, bubbling out of the catch basin, and I think we've all seen that in during large storm events. Um, the concern raised by engineering is that when the water leaves the end of this trench, um, it will flow over the sidewalk, so there is a section of sidewalk here. Uh, you'll go over the sidewalk and then into the Han Street. And the concern was that, or is that when that happens, um, during during, you know, freezing conditions, that could lead to icing on the sidewalk. Our response to engineering was that currently under existing conditions, all of the water that's leaving this property flows over the sidewalk in Alton to Nahon Street. Um, I mean, that just, it, it happens because there's no drainage to prevent that from happening. So there is already water flowing over this section of sidewalk and we've quantified how much water that actually is. And our response, we stated that because we are putting in that infiltration trench, we're actually reducing by more than half the volume of water that flows over the sidewalk during a 10-year storm, or pretty much any storm, any of the smaller storms, we're significantly reducing the amount of water that flows over that section of sidewalk. Engineering's, in this letters, I'm reading it tonight, and, and again, trying to digest, digest this on the fly. They're saying that they're still not finding that to be acceptable and want a connection to the drainage system in Nahon Street. So clicking to the next page here was catching this out very quickly as, just, you know, as the meeting was starting earlier tonight. The closest drainage connection in Nahon Street is this existing catch basin, which is what is that, west of us, sitting in front of the property at one, number 193 Nahon Street. So the only way to get a connection to that drainage system unfortunately is we will have to put a structure of some sort, whether it's a catch basin or a drain manhole within our infiltration trench. Bring a pipe under the sidewalk, under the curb, being out to Nahon Street. Install a drainage manhole in Nahon Street and then bring a pipe over to this catch basin in front of number 193 Nahon. You know, I say this is unfortunate because this adds significant cost to this whole project. There's the cost of the drainage structures and drainage pipe, obviously, but there's the cost for you know, removing and keeping the sidewalk pavement, removing and resetting the curb in the Han Street, doing trenching in the Han Street and repaving to the satisfaction of engineering, you know, the trench work that we do. We haven't even discussed that with engineering, whether that be a trench patch or something larger. We'd have to identify that, but it, it does add significant cost. But, but the way I read the engineering memo issued today, it sounds like this is the direction that they are going to require. You know, or, you know, when they issue a, they talk about issuing a utility permit and curb cut for this project, this is gonna be their requirement.
Well, to what extent are you, I mean, to create you are disturbing the curb, you are disturbing the sidewalk already.
You know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I interject?
Please.
I think we could go on with this and discuss it, and I feel like our board, with what we know about this project and what the Dornies have supplied through Mr. Jordan, I, I feel comfortable with taking this project to a vote and then have engineering meet with Mr. Dorni and their team to figure out how to solve this. And I'm not sure, I haven't been in this situation before on our planning board where engineering has, I don't know if imposed is the word, that's too strong, but this type of drainage system that ties into an existing, I, I know Nahon Street is complicated. I know there's issues, but I don't think this is the right project to highlight to go to this extreme. So I don't know if it's possible, Mr. Chair, but I would like to just end the conversation and go to a vote and have engineering like work this part out after. Is that something we could do? I don't know, Matt, if you wanna chime in on that?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I haven't been in this situation to this level before.
Right.
I don't, honestly, I don't know why our board is actually going through this part of it. When it should be a separate meeting with engineering making this part work.
I do I do agree. I think this is a little bit, a little bit of overreach here. Again, this is a simple subdivision. If this was a lot that could have been done with approval, not required plan, engineering wouldn't have been putting any of this effort into, you know, getting extra drainage, anything out there. There, there would be no drainage needed, so. I'm fine going forward with this. I'm just uh, I think perhaps if engineering comes before this board while we're discussing this, maybe we can convince them otherwise if this is a little bit of overreach. This is a significant cost that the applicant has to pay and is being imposed by engineering. Even though this board believes that what is proposed here works fine. So uh, again, I'm, I'm fine voting, you know, to move it forward, but this could render the decision that this board made makes unbuildable if your conditions put on by engineering that this has to be done. So again, I'm willing to work with the applicant and engineering if they need, if engineering needs to appear before this board straighten this out, I'm fine with that too.
Same here.
I'm okay with that too, and I, I was, that was an option because I feel like they need to show why the, the evidence that has been presented to us as a board is not sufficient enough, why they disagree with it, which their, their memo didn't really indicate.
So, uh, I I'm, I'm very comfortable agreeing with the, the three of you and I'm wondering, how do we reflect this in our draft, our draft vote and our draft decision then? Is this a condition that we say this issue be resolved separately?
Let me make a suggestion. It would, it would mean that the applicant would need to extend the time a bit, a little bit, if you push this forward. But instead of, you know, there's two options. We could, again, we could we could decide on this and, and leave it up to the applicant later on to, to work it out. Or we can have the engineering come before the board and explain why we feel this is necessary. Because truthfully, if this is required, this might make this whole project, you know, not feasible. It's adding that much of a cost to it. I mean, we've already had the cost of potentially adding, contributing to a new water system out there. The applicant made to approve plan, even though the board did not feel like that was necessary. It was a small project, so there's been multiple expenses put on this owner. And I'm, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with it. I'm not happy with it. And this is just another, you know, another piece of chipping away at it. I don't think it's appropriate, so it would be up to the applicant how they wanna proceed. But we could either, you know, proceed and, and close it out with what we have and let the applicant go on their own and, and work it out with engineering, or we can, the board can work with engineering and the applicant.
To, to respond to that, Mr. Chair, I think the, the applicant's preference would be to, to work it out with engineering and perhaps this could be reflected in, in the board's decision that engineering has made this comment, that there, there may be be some need for a connection to municipal infrastructure. And, and, and let us work, work it out that way. The decision already requires compliance with the stormwater management standards. If that connection is required under the stormwater management standards, we would be required to do this anyway, regardless of what engineering has recommended. But I think, you know, from, from, from our perspective at this point, you know, with, with all respect to, to the engineering department, I'm, I'm getting the sense that this is a situation where when the only tool you have is a hammer, everything looks like a nail, because I think what they're used to dealing with is the head of the lake project or the big 40Bs that they're dealing with in town. Whereas this is a, you know, a two-lot subdivision with, with a slightly wider private driveway than what exists currently, so. I, I think as, as, as Mr. Jordan demonstrates in his, his, his calculation and plans, this is a, a significant improvement over existing conditions with stormwater, so. We would request that, that the board give us the, the leeway to, to make the arrangements with Mr. Renault at the time.
And I, I think we are all in agreement that that's the, the path forward. The it's from, from our process though, as part of our approval, we're going to leave this. We're gonna, we're gonna name this, this item to be decided by the applicant with, with engineering.
Thank you.
For, for me, it's, it's even, it's one, one once, one step more, like I'm not how to, where do we reflect that in, in our decision is, is sort of, is my, my question to the, to the rest of the board?
I, Mr. Chair, I believe it would be in motion.
Okay, alright.
Thank you. Again, this is uncharted for me on the planning board, but I have been in planning board meetings on the other side where different motions have reflected approval, endorsement, whatever, to also include review by town or city engineering as required by permit or however.
Yeah.
Warded.
I think it's, and Attorney Schumer, I know you gotta get going soon, but I think in some of the conditions here, it generally covers some of the things. I, I'm looking at number five. And so I think it could possibly be kind of covered, but yeah, I think you could make the motion and I'm not certain on that, but where you could work with engineering after to address, you know, any other concerns that you may have or things that need to be addressed. And also then when the person comes in to get a building permit, what, we don't even know what this footprint's gonna look like yet, so. I think there's definitely gonna be things that we're gonna have to look at and, and possibly change as well, so. I would, I'm not on the board, but I think that for everyone's time, and I think Matt said it best. I think that's probably the way should lean.
Agreed, okay.
And one last comment on that. Thank you, Aaron. I would also say that in projects that would not be going for a subdivision or A and R, they would also go through permitting through the building inspector that would also trigger this and go through engineering before approval. So it, it just seems like that would be the natural path if we weren't going through this process when it would be sent for permit, so. I'm not sure how much we do need to add to the motion.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask that we do make, make it part of the motion just because it has been a recurring item and a recurring question and, and one that's taken up some time. I think perhaps in a similar vein, the next count comment is around stormwater management and recharge calculations. You know, this y'all will work out and doesn't require additional motion, right?
We would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Board members? And engineering has provided some draft language to update some of these conditions as, as example here.
And for the record, Mr. Chair, we reviewed that. All of the proposed revisions by engineering are, are fine with us. No, no objection to any of that.
Okay, thank you. And I thank, thank you, Attorney Schumer. I think that, that does take us through, through these documents. Alright. Any other final comments from the board? Alright.
Well, we, I don't think we should go final comments. We still have public, this whole public hearing open on us, so you can hear the public. We don't, anything new that
Yes, no, that, that, that's what I was referring to, so. Mr. Bousan, I think you're our only member of the public. Do you have any comments specifically to the, the items discussed tonight?
No, just one question as such, the, because the discussion was happening from your side and engineering department was involved. As the way I understand is they have provided some comments and concerns, so can the board need to get the engineering department's approval before the final vote can happen or the vote can happen with the comment as such that it will be done separately? And if it is happening separately, how does that work? Where does that get noted as to some of those engineering comments or concerns are getting addressed? I'm just trying to understand process here.
Sure. Uh, that's a fair comment. To the extent you know, we are acknowledging it as part of our motion when, when we are concluding our deliberations. Mr. Show me Schumer, sorry, Mr. Jordan. Do you have any, any response just in terms of how the process plays out generally?
There's no requirement that the engineering department approved prior to the subdivision. They're requested to give comments i- in this and all subdivisions, but here they have, they have done so.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
I would just say from my understanding too, I mean, I think you guys have addressed most of their comments. I think there's a little tweaking that needs to be done. But you guys have done a good job addressing a, a number of the issues that they have. And then also from my understanding too, you followed all the towns definitive subdivision bylaws and that's what you're here to do. I think going back to Matt's point, you went above and beyond some of the, you know, what we've asked. And so I think you've met most, you know, all of those requirements and I think and that, so I know you've been on the board too. I, I think that's basically, you know, and then all that other stuff can be handled. And they don't need this to the sign off. And again, I could go to the building permits too, to make sure all the things are being addressed before those building permits are, or building permit is issued.
Right.
Okay, so essentially, to my understanding, the subdivision approval can happen, but the engineering department's concerns need to be addressed before the construction can start as such. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, fair. Just wanted to understand. And, and just for the record, this is Bushan from Three Kathleen. The other question is, Mr. Chair, with respect to many discussions we had in the past, you had mentioned that those has already been noted and those will become the part of the considerations or motions in the final decision as such, right? Do we need to revise that or do we need to just mention it today? Or it's all been already taken care, especially with respect to the tree protection with respect to how we will be ensuring that the, the boundaries or the property lines will be correctly noted before any construction starts? And some of those concerns slash discussion points And some of those concerns slash discussion points, will those all be already noted in your draft?
Uh, I, and I, I don't think we need to revisit them today because we've had, uh, significant discussion in the past. Um, I do think to the extent, uh, possible, they're reflected in the conditions that are spelled out, um, both in, uh, on the plan and, uh, will be in our, uh, final decision. Um, and as Aaron rightly noted, much of this is really negotiating for, uh, a future building, um, and trying to set, set the stage for that, so, uh, all of that, um, you know, will be uh, delivered, you know, decided through the, the building permit process, um, at that future time, so, um.
Now, and my last comment would be as to, I understand you guys explained me really well last time, that as to many of my thoughts are more with respect to the builder, rather than to the current owner with respect to the subdivision of just the sale of the land as such. Uh, in your draft decision, do you put something as a recommendation as to when the building will be getting constructed, the builder should be considerate to X kind of, no, X kind of conditions or X kind of, uh, recommendation, so in your decision, I understand you do not necessarily have the say with respect to what builder will do or will not do, that is more of the building, building department as such, but in your decision, does something go as a recommendation with respect to what the builder should at least consider? I'm just trying to understand, or this is more with respect to what is required for the subdivision only?
Yeah, again, um, uh, within our purview and within the subdivision, uh, uh, process, we're reviewing the, uh, the discussion for the subdivision of the lot and that, um. So, uh, everything that, that you're asking about is really related to the future development, the future construction of, of the home and, and the way and the, the drainage when all of that is to occur. Um, all of this to the extent possible, um, with regard to our purview, um, is reflected uh, in the waivers and in the conditions and in the decisions, so, um. So, I think we, we've gone as far, as far as we can, um, in terms of really being, uh, you know, thoughtful about the sort of the future building to try to set a good stage, um, just in terms of how the land can, can be, uh, can be used, um. And that, that's why we have the discussions around the driveway and the turnaround and, um, and the drainage, so.
Alright, thank you, that's it from me, sir.
Alright, terrific, thank you very much, alright, um. So, um, I think that, uh, uh, is good cause to, um, close the, close this public hearing and, uh, receive them. Uh, and I may be getting things, uh, out of order, so I'm happy to be, uh, corrected, so is there, um, a motion to close the public hearing?
Yep, I'll make the motion for the, uh, public participation.
A second.
Alright, um, all in favor, uh, Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, um. Alright, and, um, alright, I really appreciate the discussion, is there, uh, uh, a mo- uh, is there a motion, uh, before us? Um, or is there, is there any, um, um, sorry, Matt, any, any deliberation now that the, the hearing's over in terms of, um, our decision, the, on the waivers and the conditions?
Uh, I would, uh, I would say that I am comfortable with, uh, all the plans that we have so far, there's some edits to the, uh, conditions that need to be made, but, uh, I feel comfortable that, uh, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the subdivision plans as presented, uh, with the condition that the, um, uh, our final, let's see, our, our final decision will be edited, uh, and, uh, with, with the changes just received. So, I guess I'm making a motion to approve the subdivision plans, presented with, uh, minor edits to be made.
Matt, just a note on the, the motion, do we want to add the date of the plans in front of us? Um, for example, do we want to add, um, I believe the, the date of these plans was seven eighteen twenty-three for parcel ID thirty-two dash forty dash fifty-four B, does that need to be added to the motion?
Sure.
I, I, I would like to see, I, I would like for our board to have the date of the, um, the plans in front of us on there.
A point of order, Mr. Chairman, uh, is, the date is the seventeenth of July.
Right, alright.
Okay, so the plan that's in front of us, the certified plan, has been prepared. Okay. Is that the latest date?
Yes, the seventeenth is the most updated plan that we have.
Yeah.
Any minor revisions to the plan, the, the date of the seventeen four whole, obviously.
I, I see my confusion, um, some of the sheets have the revision, revision three, seven, seventeen, where some other of the sheets do not, obviously the ones that were revised don't have that latest, okay, understood, my mistake.
And, um, Matt, within your motion, um, uh, are, we are including, um, uh, future review regarding, uh, uh, drainage in connection to, uh, water mains, uh, to be, um, discussed, uh, uh, separately.
Uh, no, that, that's gonna be taken up with the applicant and engineering.
Okay.
Or, what the applicant, uh, the applicant is turning, so, um, if they're fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Alright. Okay.
We are, Mr. Chair, um, one, one point of order for, for myself, if I may, and, and forgive me if the board was planning on doing this in a separate motion. Uh, I believe the board also needs to, uh, take a vote on the requested waivers that are shown on the plan.
Yeah, I, um, uh, I guess we should do that first, um.
Um, alright, let me revise my motion to, uh, accept the plans, um, presented dated, uh, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And, um, all of the waivers enumerated on set plans. I don't know if you need to re-out each one, but, um, I think that's why we have them on the plan, so approving the plans with the conditions stated on the plan, or the waivers, the waivers stated on the plan.
Is there a, a, a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you, Kevin, um. Alright, all in favor, uh, Bill?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Terrific, alright.
Very much, board members, we appreciate everybody's time and the time and, and interest of the neighbors.
Uh, thank you as well, and, uh, I think, uh, um, as Aaron has said and other members, uh, we, uh, appreciate, uh, um, all of your attention to detail and, uh, and the process, and so, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and congratulations, Mr. Jordan. We can move to our next item on the agenda, um, which is, uh, uh, any update on, uh, on three A from Aaron?
Sure, so yeah, we had, um, gosh, we had another meeting, um, last week, and I don't know where the time goes, um, where we were discussing, um, the maps, and I think given, um, what we heard from the town council, uh, we talked about for a little bit more, we're gonna do, um, kind of two different maps, one being what we presented to the town council, showing the five different districts as well as, um, what we just need to do to be in compliance, so that might be three districts, because we did hear from a few of our counselors, a couple of our counselors, that they would like to see, um, kind of what that would look like, um, just meeting the numbers, so. Uh, it actually is gonna go back to initially what our plan originally looked like, and then we kind of expanded on that when it came to wanting to include the other side of Main Street, um, as well, and so I'm playing around with those two different maps and the compliance model, which is the ma, uh, Excel spreadsheet that I, uh, we use to, uh, input all the GIS data that kind of shoots up the different numbers to make sure that we're in compliance, gives us the dwelling units per acre. Um, so I'm hoping to have that for our next meeting, which is next Tuesday, August first. Um, also, uh, starting to work on the zoning draft bylaw, um, as well, and so that's something that we need to put together, and the state has a, um, kind of a generic one that you can work off of, so I'm gonna be using that as my starting point, and then just maybe pulling a few other things from our mixed-use bylaw, as well as maybe some other bylaws, um, that have been passed, um, I know Lexington's their mixed-use, just pulling some maybe different languages, and then it will go back to the board, um, for them to take a look at, um, before we present it to the general public. Uh, we do have a kind of a communications outreach, and I know, um, hopefully if I can get things done by the next working group meeting, um, we'll have a draft bylaw that the group can work on, um, I'm not making promises, because it's a lot more work than I was, um, hoping for in two weeks. Uh, not hoping for, I shouldn't say it that way, that I was planning for, uh, over the course of two weeks, because other things are going on, um, as well as the two maps, which, um, shouldn't, uh, be a problem. And then we'll be going in front of the planning board again, um, to discuss what we've kind of come up with, with, I'm kind of giving to you right now, and you could provide us your initial feedback, and, um, going to the town council, and then kind of starting our communication, um, strategy, and we'll present to the different boards that have been part of, um, this, uh, working group, as well as having public meetings, um, discussing what we're doing and getting feedback from the town. Um, and then also looking at other ways that we can get the word out of what we're thinking, uh, MBTA communities in general, so we have our town day again October seventh, um, as well as, um, some other, uh, events that maybe we could, um, just have just a table there, um, highlighting the information that we're providing, even if it's just, you know, a flyer about upcoming planning board meetings, public meetings about it, um, and then we're hoping again to still go to town meeting come spring of twenty twenty-three. Um, and, um, you know, we'll, we'll work, uh, with what, what we have, and, um, you know, have the two different models, decide which one goes to town meeting. And, uh, yeah, I think we have our work cut out for us, and Matt, um, was up for meeting too, and I don't know if there's anything he wants to add. I won't go into like great detail, like dates of when we're hoping to be in front of you, with, you know, all you guys, when the public meetings, so that could all change based on how the zoning bylaw draft goes and, uh, the maps as well. Uh, but it's been a really great group working together, um, it's been a fun project, um, I, I can say that honestly. Um, and I think also, I think Jim can touch on it, the gentle density, you know, we have our mixed-use multifamily overlay district already, um, and so this is kind of filling in and creating some density around our Main Street area in downtown and different type of housing, um, from kind of those larger, um, mid to larger, um, developments, and really the point of the forty A is to create kind of that middle housing. And then also, I think we're going to move forward too with, uh, looking at the Greenwood area and what that's going to look at, uh, look like, and I know Jim talked about that last time, but that is gonna be separate from forty A, so looking at some multifamily around, um, the commuter station as well. So, that's my update.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron, I'll add a little bit, um, the subcommittee, um, felt very strongly that, um, you need to include more of downtown, so like the entire, um, basically, area gets shifted, uh, to the east of Main Street a bit, because, um, you feel strongly that you need to get a density of, uh, of people in our downtown to be vibrant, not just have a density of people around, uh, a communal stop, but they're gonna go someplace else. So, um, that's why you see the map, it is, it is skewed, or not skewed, it, it, it shifts more away from Wakefield Station towards the east and encompass the downtown, because that's intended to, to really bolster, uh, the population you know, along the bus route and along where the majority of stores are, but so. You see that, I, I don't know what kind of pushback we'll get, and it goes out to the public, but, um, the subcommittee felt strongly that, so we can all defend it, and, and I think we'll be pushing it out. And again, with, with with Greenwood, we felt strongly that, um, that should be left on the table, we haven't really worked out densities or anything down there yet, but again, feel like in the spirit of the MBTA communities and, um, to get some more housing and how that people, how needs, um, some areas of Greenwood should be included in some district.
And, uh, then, I'm, I'm impressed and grateful, um, I, I really think that's, that's a, a really important, uh, way to articulate it, you know, with, you know, keeping downtown vibrant and shifting it, and, um, so that, that sounds, uh, compelling from, from, from my view, so. Um, thank you both, and thanks to Jim and, and the other members of the working group. And, uh, happy to keep, uh, uh, help, uh, do all the, all the promotion and all the uh, connection and relationship building, and, uh, thank you also for not, uh, uh, not letting, uh, uh, Greenwood, uh, go forgotten, because that, that's, you know, there's opportunity for density there, as, as you said too. Um, well, and, and there's, you know, commercial and, and business notes there that.
Yeah. I think that's important too, I mean, we're kind of tied to these restrictions with the state of what can and can't be done, and so it actually might be a little better to have more, um, we talked about this, being a little more creative in the Greenwood area, allowing to that mixed use, um, as well, and, um, possibly looking at senior, so senior housing and, and all the different things, um, so, um, we're not bogged down by what the, the state wants, so I, we're gonna keep it two different things, um, two, two different packages, I guess I should say, um, whenever we go to town meeting, because they are two different things.
Bravo, bravo, um, Bill or Kevin, any? Any questions or comments?
I think this is wonderful, thank you for the update, that's, it's promising, appreciate the time and effort.
Yeah, no questions, but echo that, thank you for the time it's been put in, I know it's been a, a large project.
Yeah, alright, just to add one more thing, what we had talked about a lot with, with the downtown in Greenwood, that not only is it served by commuter rail, but it does have a bus, the frequency of the buses is it's not the best, but it, it, it's not awful either, um, from basically Melrose to, to Wakeville Center, you, you get the, the bus that is inbound and outbound on the same route, whereas when you get north of that, you basically have a bus that circles the lake and comes down that aside, so it's really difficult to make that a good commuter loop. Um, and the bus is a lot cheaper, so getting into Boston, getting to, uh, Oco, um, there's a, it's considered cheaper than in the zone two, uh, mineral path, so. Uh, again, it's, it's a, it's something that can enhance Wakefield, that's some needed, um, housing.
Well said, thank you, um. Uh, our last item on the agenda are items not anticipated, uh, by the chair. I'll, I'll open up to, um, to, to y'all and, and to Aaron, um, if there are other comments.
Um, I, the only thing I'll add is, um, you know, we are having our town day again on, October seventh, um, and so you guys had a great table there next year, so just something to put on your radar, I know, um, so, I believe someone reached out to you guys, um, and so, uh, Um so at least someone reached out to you guys, um and so uh just something to mark down one to four P M. Um and then um the bike pad plan, we talked about that last time, moving that forward, so we're making some edits there. Um I think we're going to have to play around with a few things and uh master plan, we should be seeing something this fall. Um for public comment as well as presentation to planning board and town council, and I'll have those dates to you hopefully soon. Um there are some moving parts that I need to kind of settle hopefully tomorrow. So hopefully um during either and uh an email to to you guys or at our next meeting, I can give you a better timeline of what that looks like. And for the joint meeting as well, so those are my my updates.
That's terrific, thank you.
Well, thanks, Aaron, um since you brought up the bike pad plan, um town council had. A booth or a tent table at the farmer's market this past Saturday. And I got a chance to talk to Jonathan Chines and um Julie Smith Galvin. And they said a lot of people were asking about bike pad plan and um it was about fifty fifty, like discussing in favor, not in favor. So I think we have um. Yeah, we have some ways to go. The Safe Streets Group is meeting um tomorrow at the library at seven o'clock. We have a room, so we're not discussing the bike pad plan, we're actually planning the August sixth. Open streets around the lake for everybody to roll and bike. And we'll have a bike rodeo again like we did last year and some other stuff, a little bike fix station that I'm going to set up. So hopefully the weather's good and I I think that's between one and four as well on on Sunday sixth. But we'll make our final plans tomorrow.
Yeah, that's terrific, and uh I had a great time to the last one, so.
Yeah, and the bike valets getting traction, we've been holding it every Saturday at the farmer's market. And we have like maybe six bikes this past Saturday and a couple scooters and a stroller.
That's a great asset to have, I mean, even if it's just six, I mean, I think it's really great that you guys are doing that.
It's found a lot of volunteers from the youth council and the youth action team, so uh my daughter, who's the liaison for that, she set up um. A uh signup genius, and so it's it also helps them get their volunteer hours in in a very easy way.
That that's perfect, that's great. Um I uh just in terms of calendar, um yeah, we've talked about the open space and recreation plan. Um the next uh Wakefield Bylaw Review Committee with Attorney General Babrowski is September nine. September eighteenth, sorry, um and uh I would like to um. Uh use that to cue Kevin, um if there's any any additional information um that you'd like to share about the the bylaw process. And um we we do need to nominate uh two people from the board the board uh to participate in. Uh the bylaw review working group.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you wanted to do that tonight to choose the subcommittee members?
Yes, um I'd like to, um. Uh this is something that uh we've talked about in uh various ways in past meetings, um. Uh does anybody have uh any other comments to um regarding the the subcommittee um or interest in participating?
A quick question, I didn't raise my participate.
I understand.
Does does Kevin's position count as both?
Yes, he can, he counts as one of the members of the subcommittee, uh assuming, assuming he wants to do it.
Okay, that that I was just curious, because, okay, that's all.
Yeah.
And it it sounds like Chair Lieber wants the subcommittee to meet several times before the September eighteenth meeting. Um with Attorney Babowski.
Okay.
Uh sorry, just to jump in again, Theo, did you say you would like to be part of the subcommittee?
Um uh I am willing to do it if uh if Bill, you're not uh if you.
I I don't have, uh unfortunately, I do not have the time to do that, where I'm trying to split my time to a safe streets and a few others, so.
No, no, that 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 is what what I expected, so um and um none of this uh. You know, removes any of our uh opportunities to review and participate in the in the committee meetings and. And also, uh you know, we're we're going to have a lot of opportunity to to review and uh work on the language.
Right.
So that that's great, okay, um Kevin, are are you comfortable communicating with Dan, um giving him our our update? And yeah, um excellent, all right, um. Uh and uh we are. Uh I think the the last thing for me is that um uh our our upcoming meetings. We're going to schedule for August eighth and then September eleventh. So um as we've discussed uh previously and. Uh with without uh with uh without any other items for discussion, is there a a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Bill, second. And that um and all in favor, uh Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And and myself, yes, so um thank you all for um and Aaron and Susan and and uh and Jim. And absentia for working through the one ninety-seven to half uh process, so.
Thanks, Theo, thanks, Aaron, thanks, Saul, thanks, Susan.
Thank you, everybody.